I'd like to call the August 9, 2022 Pleasant Ridge City Commission meeting to order. May we stand for the Pledge of Legions?
My Pledge of Legions is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call?
Here.
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 Here. Well, we'll move on to items not on the agenda of public discussion. Are there any today? Oh, yes, please.
Good evening, Mayor Scott and city commissioners. My name is Deb Hemmey and I am the Director of the Huntington Woods Library, your library, and I just want to give you a very brief update and a teeny tiny bit of show and tell. We had 47 adults and 127 children and youth participate in this year's summer reading program. And frankly, I'm thankful for all of them, but next year I plan to double that number. One thing that set us back was that our children's librarian left for a full-time position in Illinois at the end of May, end of June. And so we were able to get the part-time position made into a full-time position and we are having the second interview with our favorite candidate this week. And so we hope to have a decision made soon and that person should be on board by the fall. And a little bit of show and tell. So a brand-new thing we have are Chromebook laptops. These are for checkout for one week. These are, these items and the other items are only for Huntington Woods and Pleasant Ridge residents. They will not be shipped off to other libraries like our books and things. We're not sharing. We are in the process of creating a puzzle, a jigsaw puzzle, and a game collection. And it's the same thing. These are just for here. We will not be shipping these off to other libraries. This is just for you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Sure.
Were there any other items for public discussion this evening? All right, not seeing any. We'll move on to governmental reports.
Chief.
Chief.
All good.
All good.
The meeting, so it's all good.
All right.
My chief cannot attend either because he's got another commitment.
Gotcha.
So we can move on.
All right. No governmental reports tonight, so we'll move on to the city commission liaison reports. And we'll start with Commissioner Budnick on the Recreation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, everybody. Good evening. And hello from the pool deck. So many happy things to report. That's my best Shawnee impression. Camp is in its final days. It's been a very successful summer day camp season. They have 30 kiddos attending the teen trip to Cedar Point. That's the highest turnout in 20 years of working, which is awesome. 168 swimmers on the Piranha Swim Team, which is amazing. So many personal best times and personal achievements to list in this meeting. And a few things to report. Teen swim, I can't believe it's end of August. Teen swim August 23rd from 8 till 9. And adult swim is August 25th, 8 till 9. And finally, Labor Day weekend hours, 12:00 to 8:00 Saturday and Sunday, and Monday, Labor Day, 11:00 to 8:30. A little bit longer, and of course, weather permitting. And as always, give the rec department a call. They'll hook you up and help you out. And thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Budnick.
My pleasure.
We'll move on to Commissioner Lenko for the school.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and go PR. That's great news about the swim team. So as far as the school goes, it was great to meet Dr. Goodrum at the meet and greet the other, what was that, July 27th, the end of the month. And then she ended up coming to the ice cream social, too. So that was a special treat as far as, you know, reaching out to the residents, getting to know the parents, and getting into the community. So I feel we're in excellent hands. The next school board meet, oh, the school board meets last Monday of the month at Ferndale High School. So no major updates in the summer other than Dr. Goodrum. And then the note you sent us about the new CASA building, I wanted to just bring that up, just so it's not a shock or surprise to any residents. But the park, the toddler park is likely to be moved or replaced. Obviously, you know, CASA is geared more towards the older students, so it doesn't so much fit the facility. And the plan is to potentially move that equipment to the other side of the park, into the big section of the park on the east side of the school. So Jim, have there been any updates on that?
No, no updates. That, as you know, is a memorial park.
Correct.
So the school district, I think before they, they're working, I think, to contact the family to make sure that that's all okay. And then maybe rededicate the park. So it's in limbo right now.
And I remember when I went there, the park was, the whole front lot was a park, and it's slowly becoming more and more of a parking lot, it seems. That's the trend. So, okay, that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Perry with the Planning and DDA.
Thank you, Mayor Scott. The planning commission and DDA are going to meet Monday, October 24th. They'll be discussing some of the things that we're actually going to be discussing a little bit later. The drive-through moratorium and some other things like that, I believe. So hopefully you can make it. It'll be 7 o'clock here at City Hall. We haven't met since the last city commission meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. And last but not least, Commissioner Schmier with the Historical Commission. I'm all tongue-tied.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so we have not met for the last two months because of summer. We're starting again in September. So the biggest thing is the ornaments. And I want to actually come up with a new name, because they are ornaments, and they would be great on a tree. But they're not just like Christmas ornaments. These are like house ornaments. So they're Pleasant Ridge ornaments, again, not specifically for holiday, for your wall, your garden, your whatever. A house or, I don't know, I need to find a word. But ornaments can be purchased. They can be purchased here at City Hall on a credit card, or you can come to the museum, or we are actually selling them on Election Day, too. So we'll be around the city. $35 tiles. And again, they're actually on display in the city, in, around the corner in the City Hall, so, or the City Office. Beyond that, Historic Museum is open 3rd Saturday, so 8:20 from 10 to 12. So come by, check it out. And that is all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments about any of the items tonight?
Any new name for an ornament?
Okay.
I got one of the decorative pieces at the, at Election Day, so thank you. It's a lovely Poabec piece.
Yes.
Mayor, real quick, and Shawnee, correct me wherever you are. We, the rec commission did meet in July. I don't know if it's a stroke of bad luck or just me being the liaison. Now, we haven't had a quorum in three meetings.
Oh, no.
So either way, I wanted to announce that there will be a meeting in October. It'll be the 26th. Should be our next meeting. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Thanks.
Yep.
All right. Well, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
Mayor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
May I have a second?
A second.
Uh, may I have a vote? Or any comments first before we vote? Sorry. All right, let's have a vote.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Yes. And the motion carries. And thanks to Jim and everyone at the office for working on the cycle track and getting that, that contract worked out with MDOT.
Very cool.
Real quick on that, the bids actually did come back for that project. This is the larger Ferndale project, which we have a small part of. So, you know, our project, we had to relook at it. But fortunately, the bids for that project only, only came in 4.5% over estimate, which these days is pretty much like coming in underestimate.
Yes.
So that project is proceeding.
Awesome.
Mostly, some work will start this fall. The bulk of that project's also going to be next year.
All right. Cool. Thank you.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, and that is the Woodward, the essentially Ferndale project that's taking it down to three lanes in Ferndale?
Correct. The only, the only thing happening in Pleasant Ridge as part of that project is on the west side of Woodward. So the lane from Poplar Park to Oakland Park, which already terminates here at Oakland Park, will be a cycle track that will continue to Oxford. And then the bike route goes into the alleys for a few blocks south into Ferndale, where it can then pick back up again. And the reason for that was the mix from the ditch in the surface lanes on Woodward. And MDOT required a certain distance for those four lanes to mix into four surface lanes to let people organize themselves as they're driving.
Excellent.
So you'll have a little gap around the ditch on both the southbound and northbound sides.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks for the question. All right, on to our discussion about the Skymint marijuana license application. Jim?
Sure. I'll just give a little brief overview of where we've been and then how we got here. And then I'll turn it over to our Skymint representatives who are here to tell you more about the project. So this, this really began when the voter-initiated recreational marijuana act was approved in 2018. The city then, we adopted an ordinance to opt out, basically did not have any, and decided to adopt an ordinance allowing for two licenses for marijuana retail establishments in the city. At locations that we controlled, at locations that we determined with criteria that we determined. And this then kind of circumvented that petition. There was no question that was on the ballot, because we kind of got ahead of it and adopted our own rules. So of course, you know, we allowed for two marijuana establishments, but in a way that we, we set the rules for. So the two locations, there were two locations in the ordinance. And another reason why we picked two locations and two licenses, and City Attorney Greg Need is here and he can clarify or correct me if I say anything wrong about this. But it's a problem when you have an ordinance that only allows for one use at one location owned by one property owner. That can basically set your ordinance up for challenge by other groups. So two licenses, two locations, it allowed for some variety within the city, within our zoning. So the other license has been approved for the Iron Ridge location. That was the natural and easy location, because it's very self-contained. It's out of the way. It's not, it's across the train tracks literally from any of the residential neighborhoods. The other location is, as shown on the screen, at the very southern end of the city on Woodward. And you can see the, the city boundary is right here. So this is the Hertz building. That's in Ferndale. There's a small building. And then this is the, I think it's Little Herbs now. It used to be Vult Vintage. This is primarily where the new marijuana facility would be located. This building has also been purchased and is part of the broader application, but this is not being used for part of the marijuana business. There are some other uses that are proposed for this, but not marijuana sales. So again, this is the three parcels that are controlled by the entity that's going to be leasing the site to Skymint. And this is the site plan overlaid. So you can see this is, this is the site plan, and then I'll go back. But the entrance driveway off of Woodward comes through the Hertz site, which is being leased, part of it's being leased to the Skymint site for parking purposes. So these parking spaces are on the current Hertz site, but will be part of this use. And all of that legal documentation is in your packet. But the driveway in and out off of Woodward into the parking aisle behind the building, where these parking spaces are located, and then you have the alley. So overlaid on the current site plan, you'll see that they are going to be removing the back half of the building. This is what will be remaining. This is to meet our parking separ, our separation requirement from residential uses, but also to meet the parking requirements for the site. It's a common issue we have all up and down Woodward. When MDOT changed the angle parking to parallel parking, it really removed most of the parking for our business district. And we struggle everywhere for parking availability. It's one of the challenges we have with redeveloping or moving forward with our business district in general. So that's how this is being addressed by the applicant. So just a couple other things. And this is the front of the building currently. The proposed building will dress up the front facade largely with a new element here, some wood elements and the sign, and then some general site cleanup. Parking, this is one thing that we've heard about and had quite a bit of focus on. To put it in relative scale, these are comparable marijuana retailers in the area. The usable square footage of each one of those, and then the off-street parking spaces that are provided, and then the parking spaces per usable square foot. So a lower number here means a higher number of relative parking spaces. So the Woodward location is concerning and challenging. There's concerns that come along with that. And I think the applicants worked hard to make sure that neighborhood spillover impacts are reduced as much as possible by providing really more relative parking here than any of the other comparable marijuana uses that are in the area. And again, the site plan has been revised since the last time this came before you in May to make sure that all of the parking spaces are now accessible from that Woodward driveway, to make it so that you can get in and out of the site without having to use Oak Ridge or Woodward Heights or the alley. You can directly get in and off of Woodward, get in and out from there. So with that, I'll turn it back to, or I'll turn it to the commission, and then the applicants are also here if they want to.
Perhaps so, so a word from the, from the applicant? Nathan?
Absolutely. So thank you, Mayor Scott, and good evening, commissioners. Nathan Kark, Director of Government Affairs with Skymint Brands. So pleasure to be with you this evening. I have to say, this is rounding out an already great day for us. We just opened our 20th store this morning up in Gaylord. All 20 stores are in Michigan here. We're a Michigan-based company out of Ann Arbor. So just to reiterate that again from last time. But now, it's an absolute pleasure to be in front of you to hopefully seek your approval on yet another industry-leading store right here in Pleasant Ridge. So we're very excited about that. So as the city manager indicated, since we were last before you in May, we've been very busy. And that was directly as a result from the conversation that we had here. So when I was here last time, we were very excitedly presenting nuances of the company, what we plan on doing here in the community, how we want to invest, and really how we want to be a good neighbor. And at the same time, we received really great constructive feedback from this body regarding parking and traffic flow concerns questions. So we've been working with our architects, our internal team, several consultants, and some of which are here this evening. So I just want to make sure we're kind of closing the loop on some of those items before I turn it back over to you. So first and foremost, in your packet, you've got several new items that are revised from the last time that we spoke. The first and foremost is an updated site plan, which is up on the screen right now. So in your packet, you also have the previously submitted site plan, which you can note the differences, I think, right away, because the site plan that's before you up on the screen right now takes pretty much verbatim the feedback that we received from the city, from your input as well. And what we did was, we tried to just dramatically improve traffic flow. If you recall, the previous submission was probably to be considered more bifurcated. We had almost two or three separate kind of sections to that parking lot. Just like the city manager said, what we've got in front of you tonight opens that up dramatically, improves flow, and tries to keep it onto that Woodward corridor right there, as you can see on the southwest side of that site plan. I also want to point out that we exceed, given this current proposal, the parking requirements given by the city and is given by the parking lot consultant that we used, who's also here this evening, which recommended somewhere in the neighborhood of 11 to 14 spaces. So, you know, we are very, very confident that this will accommodate any of the need. And as the city manager pointed out also, compared to the other institutions in the area, we far exceed that. So that's one thing in the packet. We've also included a number of renderings that we have put into the plan to try to guide customers or anyone else using the parking lot to navigate safely, efficiently, get to their parking space, go in, do their shopping, and then get out effectively as well. So look for that in there if you haven't already. In the packet, you'll also see an FAQ document, which was our effort to compile all of the questions that we've received in the meantime, since we've been here. I wanted to make sure everyone was going off the same sheet-a-sheet music here and had all the information in front of them. So hopefully that was useful to you as well. We've also worked with the city, the city's attorney, to come up with a local operations agreement, which we've amended to take into consideration multiple different factors that we've worked on. I'll talk through that a little bit more later, as well as a declaration of restrictions and parking easement. So I think in a nutshell, what these documents do is it just sets the expectations clear. You know, and I have to say, and this isn't a bad thing, by any means, we've never done anything like this before in any of the other communities we've been in. So it, I think, is a very useful tool for us. It, you know, in our industry, we have to be so conscious of our reputation, because that's how we continue to operate. That's how we continue to grow. And these documents help us lay all the expectations out. The city knows what they're getting, and we know what we're getting as well. So it helps us give a, some sort of an avenue for additional compliance. So thank you for your partnership on that. We're very excited about that as well. And then finally, given all of the concerns and questions surrounding traffic impact and potential traffic impact, we elected to conduct a third-party traffic impact assessment, which hopefully, you know, if you've looked at it, I think the conclusion, and I'll let Michael get into that in a little bit more, is that our project, our proposed project, is going to have very minimal traffic impact to the area. So, you know, we really wanted to make sure that we did that so that we could be aware of any issues, as I know you want to be as well, and that we could work to some solutions if there were any necessary. So again, I will be back up momentarily, but I'm going to turn it over to Michael Darga, who is a principal over at Giffords Webster, Giffords Webster, sorry, Mike. And he can talk through the traffic impact study, answer any questions that you might have. And then again, I'll be back up to finish up, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Again, Mike Darga with Giffords Webster, partner there, worked with our traffic unit, and we've done work in the area before. So we did two different studies for this project. As was alluded to, we did the parking study where we compared it to the various other dispensaries in the area, came up with just how much, what we thought was an appropriate amount of parking, and it did end up being more than just pure ordinance. So we made those recommendations. And obviously, Skymint has implemented that and is not only meeting ordinance, but going above and beyond ordinance and what's in the, what other areas are doing here. But then we were asked to come in and do a traffic study, because with any retail development, traffic becomes an issue. So we were asked to come in here and give our opinion of what, you know, how the existing traffic works and what may be the impact of this development on the site. So earlier in July, we did traffic studies on two different days. We did a Tuesday evening and a Saturday midday. Saturday being pretty typical for a retail establishment, that that's actually one of the worst days of the week relative to a weekday, and just more just fitting to retail. Ran an analysis of how the area is working today. We did counts at Woodward and Woodward Heights, Woodward Heights and then alley at the north of the site, and then Oak Ridge at Woodward and Oak Ridge at the alley. So kind of frame it into the whole study. Ran through our analysis of just how the site's working today. Both intersections on Woodward are operating at a level of service A on Woodward proper, north and southbound A or B. And for anybody who's not familiar, when I say A through F is just level of service, and it's kind of, A is free flow. Actually, in some ways, for most cities, like if you ask Ferndale, they don't want an A, because that means nobody's stopping and visiting your businesses. But F is a much more serious delay. Saw no delays. Everything was A and B on Woodward proper. Both the Woodward Heights and Oak Ridge on westbound the lake approaching Woodward, though, do have some delay. Both showed a delay of D to F, because they're both stop-controlled. So you're really looking for gaps on Woodward to get out. And that was existing without the operation in place. So that's just kind of our baseline of how we're starting, that there are some delays, but it's, it's existing today whether Skymint opens or not. Then we look at the size of Skymint, go through national standards as far as just how many trips per hour the establishment will generate. We make some assumptions of how they're going to access the site. For this particular site, we took 80% of the traffic coming in off of Woodward directly. Whether they come from Oak Ridge or that, but 80% on the main site drive, 10% coming on either end of the alley. And that's just an educated guess, but not much coming in from outside that area. We distribute that. We put the numbers on there. We then run the same analysis that we did for the existing conditions and came out where really Woodward didn't change at all. It's a pretty insignificant number of traffic on Woodward. No real change on Woodward Heights or Oak Ridge. It's still a D and F, just, it's a few more cars an hour, but not anything significant. And in our opinion, even the backup two there isn't going to extend to the alley, so it's not going to change really how either one of those intersections work. And, I mean, the driveway does experience some congestion coming out, but again, not enough. You're just waiting for the platooning and the gaps on Woodward to develop as people come through the area. So pretty much what any of the businesses who have on-street Woodward parking are experiencing today, this would just continue. But our opinion on it is that the establishment is not going to generate enough traffic to change or diminish the level of service, either in the neighborhood or on Woodward. I know that's all in the report. That was in your packets. I mean, it was a fairly simple, easy report here, because the traffic generated, quite frankly, isn't that significant per even the peak hours. I don't know if you have any questions. Be open to...
Mike, can you clarify how many cars per hour at peak hour you were assuming were going to be going to Woodward Heights and Oak Ridge?
It was the 10%. So you're talking, in our peak, which I believe was on Saturdays, we had like a 40, roughly a 40 car per hour peak. So that would have been like four cars per hour going to each end. And 80%, so over 30 cars would have been going back to Woodward.
Okay. So one car every 15 minutes?
15 minutes, correct.
That's your assumption?
Yep.
Okay.
We'll get to that. Yeah. Well, there's an order, so we'll, we'll get everybody up at the same time. Any other questions, comments? None for me.
Not at this time. I appreciate, I mean, I spend a lot of time personally going through and color coding and doing all sorts of crazy analyses of my own, as if I'm an expert. But I just was playing around. So I appreciate all the information. And I think kind of my takeaway from what you said is, on those alleys, there is an existing backup. I mean, that we are seeing already kind of Ds and Fs.
On both side streets, approaching Woodward, not on the alley, but just from the alley approaching Woodward, correct.
So that, those are the existing conditions?
Yes.
And we're, and this is not...
Neither one changed.
Neither changes. So we're not significantly changing that?
Correct.
Already challenged situation.
And I mean, and a lot of that backup is because they are both stop-controlled intersections.
Of course.
So you're sitting there, you don't have that opportunity with a traffic signal to get a more free flow. So you're waiting for that gap.
Of course, of course. And it is something, you know, as a city, we are also already addressing with this separate project also. So, okay, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question. Do you have any relationship to Pose in Michigan with that last name?
There are probably some distance ones. Most stayed down in this area.
Okay.
There is another one of me in the area who works for Hubble Rothenclark, so I always have to be careful that there's a, that's why you always see my middle initial. But yeah, there was, it's a couple areas that came in.
My mom's a Darga. That's why I ask. Yeah. Like, you don't, I don't hear that name often. So you're suspect.
All right.
Just kidding.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mike, and thanks for your questions for Mike there, everybody. Before I wrap up, I just kind of want to talk through a couple additional changes that we've got before you here, too, focusing specifically more on that local operations agreement. So when we were here back in May, there were some concerns expressed about our complaint resolution process, if a complaint were to arise, or if we have any feedback coming from customers or residents. So you'll notice in the local operations agreement, we have beefed that up. You know, it's not necessarily anything different from what we do already. I just threw some more details out there to help explain that. So in a nutshell, we provide customers and residents numerous amounts of ways to express feedback, concerns, any complaints that they might have. And I think the nuts and bolts of it come down to, we have one dedicated staff person who will be responsible for getting back with anybody who submits any kind of feedback within 24 to 48 hours. So glad to put those details out there. Hopefully, that kind of gives a little bit more context on that for everybody. Additionally, I understand that there was a desire to have at least two corporate contacts for the company on a city level. So I'm happy to say everyone here's got my contact information already, because, you know, I've appreciated the discussions and more to come as well. But we'll also be providing, if approved, the manager for District Park, which is the entity that's going to be holding this store for us, their contact information as well. And, you know, with that comes a duty to continuously update if there happens to be any turnover there. So look forward from that is from, from us as well, if there happened to be any comments that come to you, from residents or anybody. And then finally, we are, in our operations agreement, officially committing ourselves, you know, to be the best steward in this community that we possibly can. Questions came up last time on what we plan on doing within the community. You know, and in a nutshell... You know, and in a nutshell, we like to come into communities and learn how we can help. I think I mentioned to everyone last time we were here, that our company was actually founded to bring jobs to Michigan, to try to elevate the middle class, and we certainly want to replicate that if welcomed into the community here. So, what we're doing is, we are committing to an annual financial contribution that we would give to the city to use however they see fit, essentially discretionary income to help the community in any way that the community needs. I will say that we intend this to be a floor for the commitment that we're going to make here. I know I mentioned this before, but it's certainly worth mentioning again, that all of our employees, all 800 and growing right now, have two paid days volunteer time every single year. So, we encourage our employees to use that, we would certainly be doing the same thing here. Employees are also able to go and use their time however they see fit to better the surroundings around them. But we would also hope to partner more with this body here to talk about opportunities on how to use that. So, that would hopefully be part of the ongoing discussion, on how we can make a positive impact. So, with that, I think those are pretty much the high-level changes. Happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for all of the responses that you gave us. I know we gave you quite a list of things to answer. A lot of our, a lot of our concerns were more related to the fact that your location is a retail location than the fact that it's a marijuana retail location. We'd already wrestled with that issue last year, and we are, you know, very interested in not making Woodward more of a challenge, or the alley or the neighborhoods more of a challenge, with your presence or any retail establishment that might go into that building.
Certainly.
We have some additional leeway with marijuana establishments than we do with others, as it turns out, as, just because of the way that our ordinances are laid out. And I'm thankful that you took advantage of all those opportunities to address some of those issues that we've had. So, with that, I think I can open it, or should we take a motion first?
It's up to you. I'm probably going to go here for the public.
Yeah, why don't we do that, yeah. All right, well, thank you, we'll hear from the public.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
John Wilk, Wessels and Wilk Funeral Home, 23690, maybe your new neighbor. A couple of things that bother me is that traffic is tough on those alleys, and I live there, and evidently, a lot of you folks don't know that I live at that place. And I see it day in and day out, I see the Woodward Heights, I see the alley, I see people cutting through my place to get into the alleys, they don't go to Woodward Heights, and it becomes a very difficult, difficult situation. You know, I've had people make me back the hearse up, thinking that they're for my funeral, and they cut through my lot and go down the alley. And I foresee this as becoming more and more of a challenge with more and more people. They extrapolate those numbers over the time that they're open, but their peak hours, they're going to have a lot of people and a lot of cars coming through there, they're going to be funneling them in, you're going to have probably, let me see, I was trying to figure out. Say, if they're open over a six-hour period, you're looking at probably at least 33 cars per hour. So, you've got 60 minutes in an hour, you know, you've got, you're slamming cars into that lot, and they're not, and 33 cars in an hour, they're going to spend 15 minutes each, how many, how many cars can you fit in there? Where are they going, all going to go? You're going to have an awful lot of overflow, because they're not, I mean, you open at, what, nine or 10? Nine. From nine to three, it's going to be okay. From three to nine, look out. It's going to be a crapshoot out there. And then you're going to be running those, they're going to have those new bike lanes down the alley. It's all a disaster waiting to happen, so... Also, my concern also, it's supposed to be 200 feet from a residence, right? There's residents right across the alley. Then why aren't they, how is that not considered into this calculation? Ferndale, Ferndale is a, you know, is our neighbor, and they need to be considered in this lot. Because, now, they're crossing over, they're using the building in Pleasant Ridge, and they're using the lot in Ferndale. So, they can't have it both ways. I see how they're going to do the 26, not 26 spot, are they going to take, are you going to take over the whole Hertz and control that whole Hertz lot? Are you still going to keep Hertz open?
That would be a good question for the gentleman who are representing the seller, and then also our landlord?
Mm-hmm.
Who are here.
Okay. Because that'll, you know, that'll, that'll help a lot if you take over that whole lot. But if you don't, I think, I think it's a disaster waiting to happen. I really, really do. And you're so close, we have so many families walking up and down Woodward with their families, and through the alley as well. There's a lot of foot traffic, a lot of families, and I don't know that, you know, you want to have, have them exposed here. I'm not against their business, don't get me wrong, I just don't think it's the right place for the business, that's all. And, and also, we haven't even opened the first place yet. Why not, why not, let's see how that goes. See how that extrapolates out, and how their business goes and everything else, before we jump into another one and trying to force this into a certain area. I just, I just think it's, it's going to be a problem, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a couple of comments.
If I may, Jim, could you answer the question about the homes in Ferndale? Just to hit the topic.
Right. So, when I mentioned that we got to set the location requirements ourselves, it was an exercise in making sure that we did target these. We have a lot of property that's zoned commercial, and to just say that these could go in the commercial district would have opened up any location pretty much along Woodward. So, the location, the separation requirement from residential, it was calibrated, and that's counted from Pleasant Ridge residential properties. It's not measured from Ferndale residential properties.
Aren't they residents? Or were they?
It was a way of calibrating where the potential locations are.
If I speak to Ferndale about, I mean, is Ferndale even aware that this is taking place?
Yes.
And there's no, well, I don't, I guess they have lived down at the other end of Woodward Heights, that I beg to differ, their, some of their traffic stuff, because if you've been down to that end, you'd see it.
Yeah. Excuse me, sir, I don't know your name, sorry.
My name is Benjamin Joe, I do represent the...
Please come up.
...the buyer of the property. I just wanted to answer the good sir's question, which is, is yes, we do plan to remove, Hertz is no longer under a valid lease at that spot, so if Skyman is able to move in, Hertz will no longer be operating at that location.
So, they'll be using the whole Hertz lot?
That's correct.
Okay.
And sorry, sir, just for the record, your address?
2850 Stein Court, Ann Arbor, Michigan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, sorry, sir.
My name is Joe Papalian, and I own the property, if you could put that other picture up, where you have the 200 feet, 201 feet, you said, to Woodward Heights? Ah, great. So, I own the property at 131 East Oak Ridge, which is a apartment complex. I own the house next door at 137 East Oak Ridge, and I own the apartment building at 6 Woodward Heights. So, when you measured the 201 feet, did you measure it from the apartment building, or did you measure it from the house that was located next door? Because I'm looking at the document that was part of the materials that the city sent, and you have it at 201 feet 4 inches, but it looks like it's not measured from the apartment building and our residence there. I'm happy to show this to you, if you'd like, Mr. Brinkman, it's something you provided. You see that? It looks like it's measured from the house that's next to the apartment building.
This is something provided by the applicant.
And the applicant measured 201 feet.
I don't know what this is, but I've confirmed the measurement.
Okay, well, if the ordinance says 200 feet from a Pleasant Ridge residence, because you're not concerned about Ferndale, because of your ordinance, then I would ask that you remeasure to see if it's within 200 feet of the apartment building I own at 6 Woodward Heights. The other thing is, there was mention about the traffic study, and none of the businesses that will be taken over by this marijuana business are retail operations. So, the traffic study is really not very accurate, because you're measuring traffic when there isn't a retail business, and now you're going retail. It's going to be completely different. And have they done a traffic study to see vehicles cutting in and out of the funeral homes parking lot, down Woodward, down the alley, either to Oak Ridge or to Woodward Heights? It's going to be a mess. In fact, Mr. Brinkman, you and I had a conversation back in February, when someone cut through the parking lot of the funeral home and smashed into my fence, if you may remember. And thank you, Ms. Perry, for coming by and speaking with me in July, as I was cutting the grass. And I sent a follow-up email to all of you, and the only response I got was from you, Ms. Perry, that you would follow up. I'm surprised no one even bothered to acknowledge receiving the email of the issues that I noted in there. A big issue we had was with Hertz rental car, but I'm glad to hear that it's going to be gone, and the marijuana facility will be taking over all the parking. I think that will help a lot. The parking spot, is there going to be entrance and exit from the marijuana facility from the alley? Come on, someone's got to know.
Yeah, no, I...
I'm capturing all of your comments.
Okay, all right, so there's a question.
Yeah, I'm capturing your question.
Okay, you're not going to answer, you're going to wait till the end?
I'm capturing your questions, all the questions.
Does that mean you'll answer, or just capture?
I will answer, I'm just capturing everything.
Okay, great. So, the Hertz problem will be great if they're gone. There'll be, there'll be vehicles that will come in off Woodward, if there's an entrance or exit to the alley, they're going to go from the parking lot into the alley, and they're going to stream down to Oak Ridge or to Woodward Heights. And as John mentioned, a lot of people walk and ride their bike on there. If there's going to be bike lanes there, this is an accident waiting to happen.
And they're going to come through the funeral home parking lot to come out.
Oh, yes, or through the funeral home parking lot, so... Anyway, I'd ask you to take a look at the letter that I, or email I sent, and in due course, you can respond when you get a chance. Thank you.
Were there any other comments?
I think, um, 3 Woodward Heights, Sherry, Hilton, Sadler.
Kelly, Sadler. Can we come up together?
Sure, please.
I think, again, I mean, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse, the traffic is the biggest concern.
If you go back a few slides to the picture showing the overview from a sky, like a drone shot, you can see the traffic problem on our street. Our driveway is blocked in your picture. Our problem is, they say that the people are going to be going out onto Woodward, but that's going to contribute to not allowing for people to get the gap, that are trying to get out of Woodward Heights. So, that's just going to compile the problem on our street, we already can't get out of our driveway. I tried to leave at lunch, I had to wait for somebody who was turning around for regeneration to get out of my driveway, so then I could wait to back out of my driveway. I have an hour to run somewhere, that's 10 minutes of my hour. That's not acceptable, it's a residential street, we can't get in and out, and the key hours, like John said, are probably going to be between 3 and 9. That's already a huge problem for us, and that's what our concern is.
Yeah, this is going to compound the problem that we haven't even begun to fix yet. We're going to make it worse before we even think about getting it better, by increasing the amount of traffic. And like I said, you guys, you're, you said the bike, the Woodward project's happening, and that alleyway is going to be, if my understanding, is going to be already turned into bike lanes. So, where exactly is, are now they going to share that with the bikers? All this traffic coming out of...
Yeah, and if you look, go a few slides forward to the rendering of the sketch of the parking lot, it shows an exit weaving into the alley.
Down the alleyway.
So, that's a point of concern.
That's our concern, is that we haven't even fixed a problem that we're all aware, well aware of, and...
Yeah, we appreciate the work.
...already spending a lot of money to, to try to fix, and then we're going to make it worse. And I think an F rating is, that we're at right now, also, it'll just, we're already an F, so can't get any worse than that, is that the mentality that we're going to take? That we'll, since we're an F, we'll just let it go, go for it. Do they have a Z? I mean, does the alphabet keep going? Because we, you know, we are residents in this city, too, and we would like to be heard and see some of the work that we're doing happen before we allow it to get worse, instead of better. I mean...
Thank you for your time.
No, thank you, I appreciate it. Were there any other comments from people?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, can I respond and ask a question back?
Um, sure.
So, here is my question, and I really appreciate you all coming, and I certainly, I know we all hear your concerns, but I guess my question is on more of a practical level, which is, this is a marijuana facility, so it's here in front of the commission, and we're talking about it, and we have the ability to talk about it, and talk about parking, and require more. But for a lot of retail and commercial spaces, it would never come in front of the commission, and the landlord could just sign a lease with anyone, it could be a busy retailer. And at that point, how do we control that? So, I guess I'm asking, there, we have commercial and retail space in the city, and I do hear your concerns, I'm just wondering how we control it.
If I can help on that, I think the point that was raised about the entrance and exit...
Please.
I'm sorry. The point raised about the entrance and exit to the marijuana facility from the alley is a real problem. If that is, is cut off, so they can't enter and exit, then I think that will alleviate some of the problems that we're talking about. It will also alleviate the concern of people parking in my parking lot at the Oak Ridge parking, that's in Ferndale, though, that probably doesn't concern you. But it does concern me, and I've had the problem in the past. But if you cut the entrance and exit from the alley, that will help a lot.
I hear that. I guess, back to the point of, if this wasn't marijuana, we wouldn't be having this commission discussion at all, and it could be any busy retailer without any control, so...
Is that what you, I mean, if I can, is that what you did with Cork? I mean, they had parking issues.
Well, that's a license, because they have a liquor license, it also...
But the city did something positive on that, I think. And here we're asking the city to do something, if they're going to allow the, and I understand your position, and I applaud the fact that you got ahead of it by passing the ordinance, but, but don't make a situation we have worse, and you can make it better. Hertz being gone is a big help, because they'll have the parking that they need. But not having entrance and exit of the marijuana facility from the alley is a huge benefit to everybody. There's going to be an accident there. There already are accidents that aren't reported.
So, at a high level, when the survey was, or when the study was done on traffic, it's three to four cars an hour.
I know, but that's not a retail establishment on Woodward.
That is the retail establishment on Woodward, using the alley.
But there's no retail, there's no retail there.
That is, that is the, that is what we estimate the traffic to be, going down the alley, and the other 30 to 40 cars head down Woodward. So, that's what the study does, and as, what, what, what we've also discussed is this notion that we have more ability to control the marijuana establishment than we do any other. So, these are commercial buildings that could be anything. In fact, you'll hear later where we're discussing the notion of not allowing drive-through locations in Pleasant Ridge as an effort to control traffic in Woodward. So, we're actually in a much better place with what has been proposed with Skyman than we would be or might be with many other establishments that might take over that building.
Could be the case, but if you're allowing the traffic study, that's, that's a flawed study, because none of the businesses where the marijuana facility is going to be located are retail now, none at all.
They didn't measure it based on current, they measured it on projected, just to clarify. So, it wasn't, so it wasn't based on the current traffic. They did compare the current traffic to the projected traffic, using...
I think, I think it might be helpful to have Mr. Darga explain the methodology he used, because it's actually very conservative, and probably, probably...
Over.
...overestimates the amount of traffic there's going to be.
And it is, and before I, one point of just correction, is when we talk to vehicle trips, that is in and out. So, if you're talking 40 trips an hour, that is 40 vehicle, not 40 individual vehicles, you could picture that as 20 vehicles coming in and out of the site. So, the comparison to the parking becomes much more logical, that we're not talking 40 unique cars coming there every hour. That is 40 in and out trips.
Thank you.
So, all those numbers are, so even that four trips could be two car, you know, two cars coming in... cars coming in and out from that route.
Right.
So just one point of clarification of that works. All these numbers are conservative. I mean, we're using national rates on similar models of traffic here. It is totally true. I mean, we, the comparison was first the existing conditions out there. We take this type of retail establishment. We would do the same type of study that if this was a different type of retail, we would try to judge it based on what that retail establishment would bring in or office use. So it is measuring what we anticipate and forecast with the best data we have of what the real process will be.
And looking at other business, other similar businesses around the area to gauge how much you're going to see.
Correct. I mean, and every type of retailer office has different generation rates, so we're trying to actually model this for, as close as we can for the data we have for this type of establishment. I think it's very true that if we saw some other type of retail in here, it would be different, but it would still be an increase obviously above what we have today because we have vacant spaces today.
Exactly.
So it would be an increase. But the numbers are conservative. We're still pushing the majority of traffic and at least in this estimation to Woodward. And it does work out, I mean, in the site. It is, I mean, the F and D ratings on those two streets there is a concern today and it's something to be addressed, but this is only making a, I mean, seconds difference in the analysis, not minutes. And we're not going from a B or C rating to a D by placing this in here.
So Mike, the process is you took your traffic counts with the traffic counts of existing conditions.
Correct.
And that's your baseline.
Correct.
And then do you use a trip generation?
Correct.
So it's trip generation manual?
Yes.
And that's probably in the 39th version now?
Probably.
Yeah. So, and that's a national thing that looks at sample sites across the country?
Correct.
And they measure how many trips come in and out of each one of those sites?
Correct.
So you have grocery stores?
Grocery stores, other things.
Dentist offices?
And it's all based on square footage and size of establishment, so it's
So they know that, you know, per thousand square feet of grocery store or marijuana facility, you typically generate
Correct.
400 or 10 trips per hour?
Yes.
And then you just take that and apply that?
Correct.
And there's a peak hour and then an average daily with that, right?
Correct. And we both, our Tuesday evening count was peak and our Saturday midday is peak. So we're actually, these numbers that we're generating here are the peak, not the average throughout the days.
Right. So the trip generation manual identifies what the peak hour is for each type of use. So you know when you're looking at a marijuana facility and you want to figure out what the worst time of day is probably going to be, it's probably Saturday at 3:00?
Correct. And we, I mean, we spoke also with Sky Mint and got, from their experience there, what day, you know, what hours during the week is their peak hours and during the weekend? So it's very similar. So we were looking at, same with the parking, we looked at the worst hours, not average.
Okay. And then you found that the worst hour here is estimated to be Saturday at 3:00 and that's going to add 20, well, do you know?
I think we were in the, in the 40 range on a Saturday.
For trips?
For trips total.
So 20 cars?
20 cars.
Coming in and out?
Correct.
During that hour?
Correct.
Okay.
And then we did a midday because we don't, you know, we don't usually do Mondays or Fridays because it's kind of a non-typical. We don't do Sundays because that's a lower thing. So Monday or Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Saturday, midday is our biggest retail peaks.
And I, just to add to that, one thing that we did do back in June, we had the traffic counter out
That's right.
In the Woodward alley for about a week and a half. And the peak hour, so the peak hour of the day was 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock. We saw an average of 12 cars per hour come through the alley, so that's one every five or six minutes. So that's, again, if we're talking baselines, that's our, our baseline for what we, what we see, what we've measured currently.
And the estimation is that this would add a couple of cars an hour?
Correct.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
To answer the question, the, the entrance is right here. So this is an entry vestibule into the building and you can get in from either Woodward or from the parking lot. So one of the things we haven't talked about at all is these parking spaces which exist along Woodward, which are not counted in, toward, in any of these analyses. So they have to provide their parking off-site, but there is, there is extra parking along Woodward that some people may choose to use.
You know, it's not the easiest parking to get in and out of, we all know that, but it's there and it exists.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak, I appreciate it. But I have really three takeaways. You know, one of them is, is the 200 feet from the facility within the Woodward Heights apartment building that I own?
Yes.
And the second one is
I just double-checked that.
It is within?
It's 200 feet from that apartment building.
It is more than 200 or 200?
It's 201 point, whatever they showed on the
To, to my apartment building.
To the apartment building.
Okay.
To the closest corner.
And then the entrance and exit from the alley is an issue and if Hertz is going to be gone, that's a big plus because then I'm less concerned about people illegally parking in my Oak Ridge parking lot. And when they park illegally, I have six signs up, I tell them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Were there any other comments from anyone before we moved on to a motion?
I wanted to respond somewhat to what you said. Again, Sherry, three Woodward Heights. We live next door to a retail location and the numbers, I don't know your software that you're talking about. I could put a joint in your body, but I don't understand your software things. But I can tell you, and I don't mean the kind of joint that they're going to be selling. I'm talking about your knee or your ribs.
We translate it.
Anyway, yeah. I see way more than three to four cars an hour going to that retail location. So you, to, kind of what you're saying is that, you're right, we are lucky to talk about it now. That's something that I wish that we could talk about, but that's a whole nother thing. I, if people are going to go to, more people than what they're saying, go every day, every day to a resale shop. I've seen other dispensaries, I've, I've gone to them. That's why I say I'm not against the business. I'm against it being in my, like, affecting my, where I live. And it is, I can't see how that's reality, that we think we're only going to get three to four more cars an hour from that, when I see more than that going in and out of a resale shop. That is, I've seen the other ones. There's hundreds of them, so there's two questions I have. So I get what you're saying. But I do face that every day with living next door to a retail. The counter that you put out in the alleys that you spoke to was done without a retail location on that alley. Now it's going to be a retail location. My question then is, is it going to be a drive-up?
No.
Like they have it, is that, there will no be drive-up, there will not be delivery?
Nope. No, it's in the operating agreement that it's not allowed and no special event without permits.
That's what I meant by drive-up, like curbside or
Yeah. No drive-through, no curbside pickup.
Waiting and lined up.
Nope.
And I have to agree that, that going in and out of the alley is, to me, like, when we discussed this before, it was indicated that it wasn't going to, they were not going to have entrance and exit onto the alley. But if in fact they are, I think, like, again, disaster waiting to happen because it's bad now. But there is retail locations that are way more traffic than what they're saying.
And I think that's actually, that's a good illustration of the challenge we face with regeneration is they have no parking.
Exactly.
So, so I think they do.
Well, but their, their parking, their parking is forced onto the street and onto
There's a lot at the end of their building.
Right. So, so that's, that's the challenge is the, this proposed use has 26 parking spaces. The funeral home has 23 parking spaces. They're going to have 26 on this site. Regeneration has none on their site.
And there's a lot at the end of the building that's a city lot that sits empty.
Right, but
They juice apart.
Again, it's not convenient and, and close and really visually connected to that. But that, that highlights the challenge. If, if regeneration wanted to move here, they could move into this building and there'd be no parking here either except the Luther spaces, so.
And I just wanted to clarify, the three to four cars was specific to the alley, not
to the business. 80% is assumed to be going in and out of the parking lot. But to Jim's point, if it was a regeneration that wanted to open another location in this spot, we would have, we wouldn't be having the conversations about the parking. We wouldn't have this new parking lot with access in and out, which would create even more backup into the alley. So, you know, being able to have this conversation and, and ask for Sky Mint to do these things, which they have been great and responsive at doing, you know, I think is something we need to consider because it is allowing us to manage a situation that in a lot of situations, we wouldn't be able to manage with other retailers. Again, other retailers that would not come in front of the commission, so.
And they have the response line and everything like that too, which I think will, you know, I think that'll make a difference, that, you know, people can weigh in and get feedback from, you know, from the retailer themselves, from Sky Mint.
Well, I, I think we've worked our way to a motion.
Well
Or? Or?
So, I think, maybe not quite a motion because there were a couple of questions that I sort of had a little bit further with, with Nathan, if that's okay.
Okay, sure.
So, you know, one of the things, because we have, you know, we've been talking, parking and traffic is one of the big issues. And so you guys have created so much parking and, you know, and that's been a big determiner with all of this. But my concern that we talked about a little, and I think Jim expressed it to you, was the signage, that I was concerned the signage was not going to get people there easily. Like, and so he was saying that you had some thoughts and to address that, like getting them into the lot much better, making sure it's illuminated, making sure it's large enough that it's really visible for people who are coming up Woodward.
Oh, absolutely. So if, if I can approach, I, I've got some handouts here as well. You're, specifically, you're talking about that curb cut coming in off of Woodward, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So a couple of different items here for everybody. The first one is
Get her in.
An updated render.
These were in the packet, right?
No, slightly, because this was over there.
Oh, right.
So then, of course, the question was, if a car parks right there.
Yes.
Then why? Plus, you have shadow.
So what you're looking at there on the top page is if we moved that proposed directional sign closer to Woodward. And then on the back page of that is kind of an illustration of what this would look like with the signage as proposed and then if we moved that to Woodward in relation to cars parked there. So we did kind of go through and, you know, realize that the average car height out there is five and a quarter feet, average SUV size out there is six and a quarter feet, and then did an appropriate rendering to kind of display that. So I know that right now, the renderings as proposed show the sign closer to the parking structure instead of closer to Woodward. I, I will say, you know, we make these signs in-house, so we've got complete control over where we can put it on the building as long as it's, you know, acceptable for city ordinance.
And there'll be a way to illuminate it so that, you know, in the dark? Okay, great.
And, you know, hey, we've got an interest in making sure people can see us too.
Well, yes.
So, you know, we, we want to make sure they can get in off the road and then find us. So we would absolutely, you know, be open-minded to illumination.
And I know you probably have additional questions, but this is getting people in. I also want to talk about making sure there's sufficient signage, whether it's on like the ground or on the side, getting people out, right? So I want to make sure people understand the desired flow of traffic.
Sure.
So here's how you enter. By the way, you also leave through the same exit too. So I don't know if the best way to handle that, maybe it's, and I know too much signage becomes counterproductive, but, you know, I don't know if arrows on the ground or having that continued discussion. Again, just making sure people know that, hey, it's an entrance, it's also an exit.
Yeah, and we would plan on having arrows on the ground. You know, personally, maybe I'm different from everyone else, but when I go into a parking lot, I tend to go out the way that I came in. I think most people do instead of searching out different avenues to egress. And I would think that that would be the expectation here. But, you know, again, we're completely open-minded in any kind of conditions that would be, you know, contingent upon this approval for additional directions as well.
Thank you.
Also, you know, I know Mr. Poplin?
Joe.
Joe, Mr. Joe, did, would something like if there was any privacy fence or something like that, like added at any point in time? Like, I don't know if Sky Mint would be agreeable to helping like define some of your parking spaces or some of the privacy or something like that for, you know, these buildings that are right off the alley? You know, the apartments and the home and everything like that? If that could be a benefit?
It might be. That's, that's actually a good thought.
On that east side of the
It's clearly within 200 feet.
Well, and I think, you know, visually that can help, like create, you know, it can be an attractive fence. You know, I would think you could work with Sky Mint, you know, I would want to see if you're agreeable to that because I think it can help, you know, these, you know, it is, we are in this amazing corridor that it, you know, houses butt right up to all of these, you know, commercial spaces and it's, it's complicated. So sometimes even just a fence or a wall to like cut the visual down. So I would love it if you guys would consider like working with the residents or the property owners on that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we're, look, like I said earlier, this is, we've got 20 stores open right now. We've, we've done this all over the state and, you know, Pleasant Ridge is not going to be any different from how we've displayed ourselves as a highly reputable operator who is in complete compliance with the state. So, you know, we're 100% open to that, so, Joe.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, I mean, Sherry, Kelly, John, first off, great meeting you. So, but, you know, we want to be good neighbors. We want to come in, we're going to invest, you know, in the neighborhood of $1.5 to $1.8 million in this property. We, we're not going to bring this place down. Like I said, we're tremendously reputable operators that were actually one of the first adult-use license holders in the state of Michigan. So we've been here since the beginning, we're going to continue to be here, we're going to do a good job here.
So speaking to that, to your investment, which is, you know, I think the front of the building is really, you know, it's really attractive. I think it improves that space really nicely. I think you stay with the, the mid-century tone of those buildings, but you are improving them and doing a really nice modernization of them. But I think the rear entrance, which I do think will get quite a bit of traffic, I think it would be really cool, I actually wrote this out because I want to say it properly, is the, the rear entrance area, I think, will be another, a primary, if not, an equal to the primary entrance point to the front of the store. I think it, it might make sense if you could, like, if it could be as thoughtful, like how the design is in the back and like considering the front entrance and utilizing some of those elements that sort of, you know, that establish that primary entry by utilizing like the decorative wood elements that you have or, and, and possibly also a canopy, you know, just because that's, you know, an, an interesting space back there. And I think it could be done in a way that would really help identify that as the door. So then you wouldn't just need like the, the big sign that says entrance this way. It could, it could be, it would reduce the need for that and it would just become very much an entrance that is treated, because then I think people will see it as a more aesthetically pleasing, but people will treat it in a better way as well, you know, versus, oh, this is an alley entrance. And, you know, I mean, you know, even using, I spoke with an architect and whatever and said, this is totally just a personal comment, this is not a whatever. But like even instead of like an arrow that's very much directional or whatever, it's like, it could be a cool mural arrow thing that's, or something that goes there. But I think, you know, aesthetically making that really appealing, I think, could be cool.
Okay.
Because the front's beautiful.
Well, thanks. Well, thanks. I mean, you know, our architects have won awards, we've been working with them for a very long time, and, you know, if you go into one of our retail establishments, which I think most of this body has been, I mean, and for anyone else here, too, I don't encourage you to go in, we've got one in Hazel Park, they're gorgeous buildings, and actually, the Hazel Park location has less parking spaces, and arguably, I think, a little bit more anticipated customer volume. So, you go there, you don't see the issues with parking, and, you know, we, I believe Mr. Darga kind of incorporated some of those overlays from three different stores that we have, you know, with anticipated similar customer volume into his analysis, too. I know our parking study certainly did, so, that's part of it. But to your point, as far as carrying forward elements, I mean, we, I think our architects intentionally wanted to keep that a little bit more understated back there, just because it is facing neighbors. But if the desire is to have something where those elements are carried more from the front to the back of the building, I think that's something that we'd be open to as a condition as well. I understand that there's a site approval process after this, and, you know, we're happy to explore that whenever it's appropriate.
Cool. That's great. I think, yeah, because it is an alleyway that a lot of people walk through and bike through and stuff like that, so it's like, you might as well make it as attractive as the front is, because it's a cool space.
Glad you enjoyed it.
Can I add one? Not make sure I follow you. I understand the entrance would be off the alley. That would be for walking, not for cars? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, you know, there's that parking that's all around it, so there's a back entrance and a front entrance for people to walk into.
Right, but...
Yeah, there's no drive-up.
Okay, but, and there, what I want, my concern is vehicles leaving the facility onto the alley. I'm less concerned about people walking up there.
This is just where all that parking is, I'm not sure if I can understand the question.
If I can answer, I think what Commissioner Perry was talking about was more aesthetic and just making sure aesthetically the back entrance, which will be used a lot from the people coming into the parking lot. If you drive into the facility, park in the parking lot, you are going to be using presumably the back entrance to enter, and she was talking about aesthetically making sure aesthetically it matches.
My concern is vehicles exiting...
Of course.
...onto the alley, which is what I don't want.
Sure, right.
But I do agree with your suggestion about making it more aesthetically pleasing. I think that'd be great.
Yeah.
And also having some type of barrier for some would be great, too. So, I'm open to that.
Cool. Thank you.
Did we hit all of yours?
You did. Thank you.
No problem.
Hold on, let me think.
Okay. Well, now, I think we're ready for a motion.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do we list the following?
So, I guess the question is, are there things that you would like to add over and beyond to determine a motion to make?
So, would it be adding, like, these three requests sort of onto the motion, like, the whole thing, or just part?
If you like, yeah, you can add those as conditions.
Okay.
So, it would be the motion, whatever you want to make, subject to the following conditions.
Okay.
And I would say, subject to the following conditions being addressed during final site plan approval.
Yes.
With the exception, with the exception of the fence.
Okay.
Because that fence would be going on property that's in Ferndale.
Yes, exactly.
So, that would be something that we would not be involved in, that would have to be something that the, that Sky Mint would work out with, well, really with, really with the property owner.
Yes.
Of the abutting property.
Ferndale doesn't own the property.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Let's see, let's write it for a second to make sure we're okay.
Okay.
And then the fence, we'll just put third. How would you say the signage one?
Okay, so, all right. See if you like this.
Okay.
So, the motion is, et cetera, subject to the following conditions, that the direct, the directional entrance sign be moved to the southwest corner of the building.
Mm-hmm.
That...
And illuminated.
And illuminated.
Mm-hmm.
That the rear entrance be improved to mirror the front.
To carry the design aesthetic of the front.
I like that. And that those be addressed with final site plan approval. And then the third condition would be that the applicant will work with the neighboring property owner in Ferndale to, to install a fence as agreed upon between...
The two parties.
Those two parties.
Not the city, just the owner?
Correct. The owner and Sky Mint.
Yes, not Ferndale.
Any issues? Okay, looks like that.
Sounds perfectly acceptable.
In terms of, about the signage, can we add signage approval versus, aren't you just putting in the one sign approval?
It will come as part of the site approval.
All the rest of the signage?
Oh.
So, I was just going to say, instead of saying final signage approval as part of the site plan approval, just making it broader to signage versus one specific sign?
Because you had the question about the signage on the, on the floor.
Yeah, and again, just as, on the floor. No, I'm just saying broaden it to just signage versus one specific sign?
Nathan, can you answer the, you're showing circulation arrows on the site layout plan, so those would be painted on the ground, correct?
Correct, yep.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you.
Or if we're going to use the, all of the Hertz site, do you need that going into the alley?
I think that will be subject to the site approval.
What is that, the...
Just the final approval of the, of how we paint the floor.
The paint, yes.
I keep calling it the floor, my apologies.
Right.
Because it's how you treat it.
I think, is the question about the one on the bottom right, that's right by the Hertz building? That there's like a one-way?
Says one-way.
Yeah, it says one-way heading out to the alley.
I think that's what their question is.
Ah, I understand.
Like, if that needs to be.
That's the exit.
You've got a lot of concern.
You also have a whole row of parking up in front of that, so, would that be necessary? If you, if you're going to use all of the Hertz, then going out to the alley there as an exit, I don't think that...
In exchange for three spots, though?
Oh, yeah, you've got way more than three spots along the street there, I mean, parking, how many go, Joe? You know.
But they could be like employee spots or something.
Employee parking, think people were...
You put the employees in the alley, and then the customer parking would be all in the Hertz.
Exactly.
And that'll eliminate them having to go out into the alley.
So, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate, this is a good discussion, I just, I think this should probably be a discussion between Sky Mint and us, and I appreciate the insight. I would just reverse the roles, and I would not want that to happen. I don't think that would be fair if another business came to you in the middle of the meeting and started to dictate how the parking would look, and you're...
It's the people that listen. On the neighbor.
I understand respectfully, and we hear you, and I...
We totally understand.
Okay, so, so, the fact of the matter is that the alley is a public right-of-way.
Yes.
And property owners have the right to access a public right-of-way. So, it's difficult to say that you have to cut yourself off from the public, the public access that you abut.
Yes.
That's, that's a problematic thing.
So, when we spoke about this at the last meeting, I was told by two of the commissioners up there that there would be no entrance or exit into the alley, that the only way in and out of the parking, of the business was off of Woodward. I was told that.
Well, I was mistaken, because I did not, I did sort of think there was going to be some wall, and we've been playing, they've been working very hard on the parking, but this parking is set up in a way that it should be very advantageous to the drivers and stuff to go out into, onto Woodward. It, I mean, and I, I believe Sky Mint will do the best they can with their directional signage and stuff like that to direct people that way, because it is, it, I don't know, I mean, they've done a lot to sort of create this, this, this solution, and they, they've created a lot of parking spaces, so hopefully, I mean...
So, am I hearing correctly that James said, we cannot block off to the alley, we have to give them access to that? Is that what you're saying, that businesses have to allow access to the alley?
It would be unprecedented in the city to cut, and it cut a business owner or a property owner off from the abutting alley. We don't do that anywhere else, and as a, as a general practice, no, you don't cut people off from a public right-of-way. That'd be like telling a homeowner, nope, you can't have a driveway.
They can interest, enter and exit off of that.
Yeah.
Okay. Are you good with the... A moment, please.
Absolutely.
Did you write it, or no?
And while you're looking at that, I just want to provide a little color. I was someone that was adamantly against this in the beginning, and I'm okay sharing that, it's, I struggled with it, and as we worked more with Sky Mint, I saw that they were willing to, to come forward and, and really show up, and do things, and listen, and do, do everything that we have asked them to, and they have, in my mind, gone above and beyond, and I'm, you know, I appreciate all of you bringing the concerns, they're valid, they're real, and I feel confident that we'll, we'll work through them. And the one part that we really haven't talked much about is truly the, really what this will do to the space. If you go up and down Woodward, there are a lot of really vacant and, and buildings that are in need of some, some TLC, and I think what you're going to see is a really good-looking establishment, and I think it will elevate the area, and I'm excited about that, and that's coming from someone that was, didn't even want to entertain it. That said, I think we're being pragmatic, and Sky Mint has really come forward, so, I'm excited, and I, but I also hear what Mr. Joe and the others have, have said, and I feel confident that we'll work through it, and I think that we'll, we'll come up with a good solution.
Right.
And I want to just come...
Mr. Mayor? Yes, please.
No, I was just going to echo Commissioner Budnick's point on that, and that part of this discussion was really planting roots for a long-term relationship and long-term success, so, there's going to be, it's a D and an F situation, like, right, there's going to be bumps along, but you're committed to the city, that's the impression we're getting that way, so...
Absolutely.
And there will be impact, no doubt. I'm betting on more positive than, than negative, so no doubt, and I agree, it's the long-term, and I think you get a chance to see that we have a very engaged public, and folks that...
Special city.
It is a special city, it's a small city, and, and we truly care about what everyone thinks, these are our neighbors, and they show up, so...
And, and we appreciate that, too. I mean, you know, this is the exact kind of robust discussion that we like having. You know, I will use your neighbor down in Hazel Park again. I mean, you know, I understand you all received a letter of recommendation about our operation from the city over there, and, you know, that's, that's how we conduct ourselves, and that doesn't stop.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could just...
Yes, please.
...make a last comment, which is, number one, I apologize if I gave you the impression of that, we hadn't seen the final plan, and I apologize if that was the impression, but, you know, like Commissioner Budnick, you know, I was concerned about this also, and I still am when it comes to the traffic impacts and the congestion. It is a real concern, but traffic and congestion is something that we have to live with, that is because of where we live, and the best way we can handle it is by figuring out the best way to manage it. And if we left, I mean, this is a retail space, it's kind of the Wild West, but working with Sky Mint, who has been incredibly responsive, has let us create a situation that allows us to manage potential traffic in a way that we wouldn't be able to with other retailers, and I think that's important, and they have been responsive, and there will be bumps in the road, and we will continue to manage them, and I think this allows us to manage, to manage, again, retail and congestion and traffic, which we are, which is part of life, which is going to be a constant struggle for us.
Yeah.
And this allows us to continue to manage that and get ahead of it versus letting, you know, a retailer without parking, with no Woodward driveway, come into those spaces and really create unregulated havoc, so...
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
So, are we ready for a motion?
Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
Jeff Hand, Aet Oxford, just in regards to the curb cut and the legality of it, we do have our city attorney here, I was wondering if you'd be willing to make a comment on that, cutting off the exit to the...
As the city manager indicated, a property owner has a right to access public right-of-ways that are above their property. I have never heard of, I'm not going to swear it's 100% illegal, but I've never heard of the circumstance where a city would cut off access in these circumstances.
Right, Mr. Mayor, I ask, so, sure, I guess, to synthesize, like, if the business owner for some reason wanted to close it, they could, the city is not, that's not something the city can impose on the business, but, just to flesh out that idea to the end, like, if, if it were to, like, the business owner could close that if they wanted.
If they wanted to, because they have a property right to access the public property. If they choose not to use it, it's just like, you know, you, you better want to put my driveway here, I want to put it on a corner, on a different corner of the street, I have that right.
Okay, so it can be done, but it shouldn't be imposed.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Yes. I'd like to move that the City of Pleasant Ridge award a marijuana retailer and provisioning center license to District Park LLC Sky Mint, subject to the following conditions upon, or during the final site plan approval, that the directional entrance, let's see, the directional entrance sign be moved to the southwest corner of the building and illuminated. And number two is that the rear entrance be improved to carry the design aesthetic of the front, and that those, that those be addressed with the final site plan approval. And then, as a separate, the number three, which, that the applicant will work with the abutting property owner in Ferndale to install a fence as mutually agreed upon.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, could I...
Oh, yes.
...add one thing, and also that the applicant would execute the documentation provided in the application, the operations agreement, and the parking restriction, which is something that was developed particularly for this project, because the unique way that they're providing parking on three separate parcels. We have a restriction that requires that all that parking be provided, even if those parcels might be sold in the future, and that should be a condition of the motion as well.
Okay.
Yes. Is that captured, or should, does it?
We've got it.
Okay, very good.
And to add in what Attorney Need just said. Thank you.
Okay. May I have a second?
Support.
Any, any further discussion or comment before we vote? May we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Alanco?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmears?
Yes.
Schmears, Doc.
Yes. And the motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Welcome to the community.
Excited to be here. Appreciate you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, well, on to the next item about the Cork liquor license. Jim? Maybe you want to wait just a moment?
Right, yeah.
Thanks, everyone, for coming for this discussion, it was really, it was really helpful, thank you.
I think there should be some gratis product, maybe, for, we're working on it. Yeah. Need another water.
I know, that's what I said.
I need another water after that.
A two-water meeting, yeah.
Kirsten?
Oh, thanks, Amy. Thanks, Kirsten.
They're kidding.
We're...
Okay.
Not him.
You can have mine, I'll bring mine. I'm pacing myself.
Right. We'll play it over it.
All right. All right, on to the Cork liquor license.
Yes, so, this is an item that was postponed at last month's meeting. The city received a request from, I can see, Kelly Walsh, owner of the building in which Cork is located, to see if the city would become involved in a dispute over the status of their liquor license. The, the long and short of it is that the business known as Detroit Celtic Doing Businesses Cork Wine Pub, that's been closed since March 2019. There is an issue between ownership of the business and the property owner and the liquor license. Detroit Celtic owns, I believe, the liquor license and also the, the business operation. The liquor license has been placed into escrow. There is a provision in the operating agreement that the city has with Cork that states that if the license is placed in escrow, the city can, can seek to pull that license back, at which point we would own the license again, and then would have to re-award it. And again, Greg Need is here, so he can, as always, correct me if I misspeak or misstate anything, but, this is a class... But this is a Class C liquor license for on premise consumption. It is a a transferable asset that has value. So for us to become involved in this, to try to pull it back when the the entities that are involved in the ownership of the liquor license, we do potentially open ourselves up to involvement in some broader issues because we would be trying to take an asset that we awarded that has value. And with that, I would say, Greg, did you want to add anything to the introduction before we turn it over to the Cork?
Just very briefly, you have a series of options, one of which is to do nothing, or the second is to get involved in some limited capacity or broader capacity. And that's outlined in in the letter that we provided. But it really is your choices what you deem to do at this point. And I'll answer, obviously, any questions that you have.
Excellent. Would the owners like to make any comment before we make any comment?
How you doing, Commissioner? My name is Patrick Sheehan. I'm speaking on behalf of my wife, Meredith Walsh, who is one of the co-owners, 50/50 owners of Detroit Celtic Entertainment, Doing Businesses Cork Wine Pub. I I don't know what exactly you're looking to find out from me at this point. I also don't want to air a ton of dirty laundry right now. But the bottom line is, we're in the, we're in a, at an impasse, and we're trying to get the business or a business back up and running at the establishment. Meredith, again, as I said, I'm, I've been lucky enough to her to agree to let me be her husband. And and also, I'm speaking on her behalf. But what what we're looking to try and try and do here is is to move forward. We have a, one half of the business has a great working relationship with the building owner. And we obviously are not having a wonderful working relationship with the other half. We also have entertained and spoke with a couple other business models and and some representatives from them, from one of them is here today. And we've had some really good conversations and dialect. And we're just kind of at a point now where, for us, being able to try and retain a liquor license with the understanding that you you have one that's hanging out there. And 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 the the ins and outs and the and the ways that you go about doing that, obviously, you have legal counsel and and you have ways you have to do it. We're just here asking for maybe some potential help. We do, we do want to be part of the community still. I think when we, when we were here and up and running, everybody liked it. The neighborhood, the neighbors liked us. And it's not really doing much good right now, kind of just sitting there. So I apologize, it's been about four and a half years since I've spoke at a podium.
No problem.
In any type of a public safety or political manner, so. But I, do you have any other, do you have any questions?
Does anyone here have questions for him?
Probably. I don't know, not quite yet. So, but thank you. It's good to, it's good to see you. It's good to see all you guys.
Well, what I, what I, again, this obviously is very influx. What I can do is, by the end of the night here, I can make sure that everybody has my contact information. And, you know, again, everything, I want to make sure, I want everything above the board. I'm just saying that that there's a lot of moving parts here. And I'm more than happy to give you any answers, any questions any of you have. And and also, you know, any ideas you have on how we move forward from here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
No, I thought, I thought.
Right, no, so I guess I just wanted to understand somewhat, just like, A, Need was describing how there's kind of three options. Two is enter, tread gently, three is get into it. Like, what's the likelihood of going into two and getting roped into three?
Well, two would be to reach out to the other shareholder, pointing out that the act of putting in the license in escrow was via, did violate the operating agreement that they have with the city. And then the city does have remedies under that, one of which is the city manager indicated is to request that the license be taken out of escrow and put into the general pool.
And so is the idea to send a letter, like, threatening that we're going to take it back?
Some form, I I don't want to get into specifics, but some form of outreach from our office to the other shareholder without necessarily, you know, generating a lawsuit, which is another option that you have, by the way. I mean, there is a breach of the operating agreement, and, you know, you have your remedies for contractual remedies for breach of the agreement. So I don't know if that answered the question. I mean, there's a range.
And I understand the sensitivity, you don't want to say too much, but
No, but I, I do have one more thing I can add. Is that all right?
Yeah, please.
You know, and just to make sure, I I don't know if I illustrated this or not, but, you know, the half that's here tonight of Detroit Celtic Entertainment, we did not put the license into escrow. And and we are, you know, again, we'll work out our differences, but but we did not wish to do that. We did not want to do that. It was done without our knowledge. And just the way the, the way things work within the the Michigan Liquor Control, one party can put it in, but it takes both to to agree to bring it back out.
But if that, I guess, violates our operating agreement, why wouldn't our first course of action just be to take it, the whole thing back?
That that is an option. Whether that would prompt some action from the other shareholder is uncertain at this point. I think that's
Because it's already breached.
There is, well, there is a breach, but, you know, you have remedies to breach a contract. A party to a contract that's been breached as the, you know, right, does not do anything for the time being, or take action to address the breach. That's kind of where you are right now.
And to be clear, the reason that this is before you is because the city commissioner has to decide what our next action is on this. So we could send a letter. If we take action to take that liquor license back, the potential does exist that the city would end up in a lawsuit, carrying the costs of the lawsuit to bring your liquor license back into the general pool, which could then be applied for again by anybody. And so the question is, when, you know, what Greg and I need to know is what's the course of action we take? So it's do nothing and let the parties work out the issue on their own. Send a letter, but, you know, kind of limit our response to a fact finding process or to work to pull that liquor license back, even if it involves a lawsuit and the costs involved. And so you have to, you have to weigh the benefit to the city. Of course, we have a longstanding business that, you know, is well regarded in the community.
In residence.
Yeah, but, you know, is the city's, is it the city's best interest to expend resources to pull a liquor license back that then anyone can be applied for? And, you know, kind of what is the benefit to the city of doing that? For, you know, those potential costs that we could, we could bear, that are unknown at this point. So that's why, you know, Greg and I need your input. And is that a fair?
That's a fair statement.
Okay, so that's, that's really what we're here to discuss with you.
And going back to my original, like, the two and three, like, if we send a gentle fact finding letter, that couldn't possibly be construed as a way to pull us into a future lawsuit.
That would generate, but you can't predict what somebody will do.
But like, if you rate it, you know, low, medium, high?
I I would think, based upon that assumption, that it's a gentle letter, the chances of some retaliation, I think, would be fairly low.
Okay. Thank you. What could retaliation be?
File a lawsuit.
Okay.
You know, they could say, hey, you're, you're going to take away, as Jim mentioned, a valuable, a property right that has some value to it.
So that lawsuit would stop the action of us getting it back at that point? So it would just go into, like, a legal?
I would assume that's what
Tag of war.
Other shareholder would attempt to do because
And the other shareholder is an attorney?
Correct.
Okay.
If I may, judge also.
Thank you.
When we say, just for clarification, from my information, when we say that if we did pull the liquor license back, it goes into the general pool, is that general pool of Pleasant Ridge or general pool of Oakland County? Does it, or is it general pool of Michigan?
No, it, that would be the the quota, the Pleasant Ridge quota pool. So every community was issued a certain number of these portable Class C licenses. And it's based on population. We had two to begin with.
Okay.
So with Maze, and then it became Whistlestop, has one, and Cork had the other.
Okay.
Liquor licenses are also portable within the same county. So once it goes into escrow, if agreed to by all of the owners of the liquor license, it can be sold to a location in another community, that then that community has to approve that license coming in. So, you know, I don't know, I don't have specifics, but, you know, X number of licenses in Royal Oak or Ferndale or wherever else have been pulled from other communities where the original community granted the liquor license to a business.
Okay.
Then it gets sold to somewhere else. And then that liquor license can be opened up in a different community within the same county.
Okay.
So the, so in the escrow pool, that license could be sold off and a new bar could open up in Royal Oak.
Okay. But if we pulled it back, then it would be
Only, we, this body would, the city would own it, and then we would award it to whomever.
Okay.
And there's no financial benefit, there's no cost. It's just we give it out to, you know, an entity who then
But Pleasant Ridge may change their too, ultimately.
Correct.
However,
Anything?
And please, and please correct me, I may say this wrong. The building has a value, the license has a value. If we pull the license back, the value shifts. Is that a correct statement? Does that, does that value stay with the current owners, or does that leave the current owners?
Goes up for bid again.
In an odd way. It goes out.
It goes out for bid again.
Right, so, correct.
Yeah, exactly.
So any entity could come and apply.
Right.
Be it the current owners would reapply for it, or somebody else could.
Right.
There will be no compensation flowing to the current owner.
Exactly.
Right.
Once it becomes part of our quota, our two quota licenses.
Right. Okay.
I'm ambivalent. On one hand, I I want to see a thriving business. On the other hand, I don't want us to get sucked into a situation where we don't belong. That said, it's intriguing sending a, sending a fact finding letter or something gentle. I think it's, it's intriguing what Commissioner Alanco said. And I don't know, I, it's, I'm torn.
Any, like, have you taken this other party to court or sued them or moderate, or mediation or anything like this?
We, we, what I will tell you is we've, in good faith, tried to go back and forth with the other party and negotiate. Again, I don't want to get into the the numbers, but again, sometimes
But the impasses be for
Sometimes, you know, just there's unrealistic expectations. But what I will, what I will also kind of elaborate on here is that the other party is involved right now. There's a peer group that is doing a, they felt it warranted a, an actual digging into and looking into. And, you know, hence a judicial review type of a scenario. And that's, that's, that's the other party's peers that are are looking into it. And they felt it warranted that. So, you know, I, Commissioner Budnick, I do respect everything you're saying. But I will tell you that I believe that in this case, the juice is worth the squeeze a little bit here. I I think it warrants at least, you know, a nice investigative letter to at least get the other party to to maybe give some reasons as to what's, what's going on here.
But I don't think the question was answered, though, of have you filed any kind of formal legal action to try to resolve this issue?
No, we, we have not tried to to pursue it legally at this point.
Patrick, could I?
Yeah.
Actually, as as the investor originally and the building owner, there have been lawyers involved. And we're still not getting anywhere with lawyers talking back and forth. So we haven't filed an actual lawsuit, but there has been legal counsel involved for a couple of years now to get basically nowhere. So the other thing, as the building owner, you know, there's a lot of costs going out for the last almost three years now. So if we can't figure out an angle to try to untangle this license or or look into other licenses, then I'm going to be forced to go a different route to a non-business entity to possibly come in there. I mean, non-restaurant.
Non-restaurant, yeah.
Yes. I mean, I'm, I'm holding out as a resident of Pleasant Ridge and the building owner to get a restaurant in there, but I can't do it forever.
Right.
So there's been some legal action pursued from the property owner.
Yeah, I think I'm on my third lawyer, so.
And again, I I'd be more than willing to make sure you guys have my contact information for any, any other questions you might have.
I have another question. Is, is the City of Pleasant Ridge, do they have the ability to apply for an additional license?
No.
No?
So the only, the only thing we can do is there's a provision in the, in the DDA Act, the Downtown Development Authority, and we have a DDA. It's located along Woodward. You can create entertainment, I think they're called, licenses, or I'd have to look up the exact term, but you can create licenses that are non-portable. So they're less valuable, but they can only be used. And there was a way that the legislature, because what was happening is, like, revitalizing downtowns were having a hard time. They couldn't get businesses in because liquor licenses were too expensive and there weren't enough of them. So they created an act that in your downtown, you can create new liquor licenses. But they can't go anywhere. They can only be used in that downtown. So they have less value. But that is an alternative route that we could look at and to, to explore. I believe we'd qualify to create those. And it's been a while since I've looked at that. But that is, that is a potential alternative route, because then it would be a new license it could be.
Right. I guess, Mike and I remember us talking about that briefly. My thought is that we should probably do just a little more homework on that. And there might be some more that you need to to do on your side with respect to the review that's happening throughout our channels.
We've, we've been waiting, yeah, the review, there's a couple of reviews going on, one from my entity and one from Meredith and Patrick's entity. So there's, that's been under review for about a year. And a little over a year now. And what we're being told is they're way backed up. There's not enough help as, as there is in, in a lot of industries right now, so.
Yeah, and and the other part to Mr. Bruckman's question, you know, COVID's kind of, you know, kicked the restaurant world's butt a little bit. And, you know, to get into a litigious battle for, for the other half of Cork, Meredith, you know, it just, there's, that, there wasn't a lot of juice worth the squeeze at that, at, you know, we're, we're looking at, maybe there's some sun, you know, sunrise coming here and and, you know, I don't know what the future might bring. But, you know, for us to get into a legal battle, and everybody here knows how businesses have had to really kind of almost set up to fail at times. And I'm not, I'm not saying that COVID wasn't handled right, but it's just, it's very hard in that, that business. And so for us, it, you know, it was actually, we just, we just kind of shut down and and said, we'll, we'll try and get everything resolved and move forward. And we, we've tried that, in good faith, the best we can. So, you know, at that point, we're looking for some, some possible other ideas.
Yeah, we waited three years to come and ask for help from the city, so.
Sorry it's been this hard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
People miss you.
Yeah, I guess, my view is that I, I don't know that the letter offers much, much juice to squeeze out.
I think you didn't get that right.
Didn't get out right, I know. But I do think there's some homework we could do on the non-portable license, just to understand it and offer that as another alternative while we see what this does. And that's not a, a lengthy process, I don't think, to to study that.
No, my, my partner has represented a lot of DDA's regardless of their licensing work, so. work, so I'm sure she could quickly give Jim all the information.
Unless someone feels strongly this evening to make a motion, that might be the, the next course of action.
So as far as the operating agreement, are you saying that you don't think that would be upheld? I mean, I, from the marijuana business, we're talking about an, an operating agreement. So I'm just wondering why a city puts an operating agreement in place if you're not going to abide by it.
All right, go ahead.
I mean, really, the, the question is, like, like Greg said, that's a contractual issue that we can choose to enforce or not. And the question is the risk benefit for the city as an entity by taking that course of action. So it's the risk of being involved in a lawsuit or getting involved in that lawsuit, and the benefit of pulling the license back, that's what we have to weigh, is, you know, spending public money on a, essentially a private business dispute. From where I sit, that's, you know, the concern, but I think that's what they have to...
That's my concern.
Consider.
It's an unknown cost and time.
The other thing about the agreement, the operating agreement, I thought that that license could not leave Pleasant Ridge because it was one of two that were on ice when applied for.
No, it's just that Pleasant Ridge had chosen never to award our quota licenses.
I thought there was terminology in that agreement, I, I'll go back and review it, that, one, it could never go into escrow without the city's approval if the business were to close. Two, that it could never leave the city of Pleasant Ridge. It was kind of set up more, almost like a lease, if I remember correctly. I, I have to review, review the paperwork, but. The other, so this additional license, so like, the Sunoco gas station that has the beer and wine, that was an additional license added. Is that kind of what you guys are?
No, that's a package, that's a SDM packaged liquor license. Class C consumption is what allows a bar or restaurant to operate for on-premise consumption. A packaged liquor license, there's no limitation on those. That's just to be able to sell packaged beer and wine.
Okay.
So that's like your party store license.
Okay.
From what I understand, Mr. Brookman, you're saying, though, that there's potential or a possibility to maybe morph a particular type of license out that, that would help us to be able to operate as a, a restaurant?
Right, so those, so the license that we awarded initially to Cork was a Class C. And again, the, the agreement which said it could never leave Pleasant Ridge, that's, that's a, a separate thing. If not enforced, it can absolutely go.
Right.
It's a portable license. The other one is, is a redevelopment license. And we are going to have to look into that. There's criteria that we have to be able to meet because it's supposed to be for a redevelopment area. And the biggest thing we're going to have to do is engage the city assessor because there are investment requirements that are... It's, it's investment in real and personal property. So there's requirements for the rehabilitation and restoration of buildings and also the project area as we define it. And so over the last three years, we have to find a project, a redevelopment project area where there's been at least 1 million per hundred, per thousand people in cities of less than 50,000. So we'd have to find 3 million. I'm assuming that's for each fraction thereof. So yeah, there's some things we're going to have to look into to see if we can even do that.
I understand.
But it's an option.
Well, I, I guess, and again, I, you know, how it all works and how you, you can move things around, I, with, with what we're looking at, trying to move forward with and doing, you know, there, there would be some modifications and monies spent to try and change the, the workings of the inside of the current business. So I mean, there is, there is technically going to be a re, a redevelopment per se. You know, I, I don't know, I don't know how you stretch the tape or stretch the lines, but...
Well, there's a requirement that there's at least $75,000 spent on the rehabilitation of the building.
I can't speak to that, I'm not.
I, but there has to be or will be $75,000 of capital investment in the building in order to issue a redevelopment license.
Well, that would be great, though. I'd love to be able to talk to you about that further.
Okay.
My, my perspective is that there's still a little bit more homework to do, but I, I would agree more homework. I, I'm not opposed to a gentle letter as well, just to feel it out, but.
Option two?
Yeah. Not opposed to, I, I don't feel strongly. Once again, I'm very mindful of the city's resources and cognizant of all that. That said, I don't see the harm in doing a little fact finding while we do our fact finding and research.
I'm not opposed to a letter, letter either. I do question if it's going to, you said you were, you were, it's your third lawyer, so I question if it will result in anything?
I think, but I think it would help, my opinion, but I think it's Patrick and Meredith's opinion too. I think with everything going on, and as long as it's been, I think a gentle
Okay.
push may get us to, at least to a conversation where we can negotiate.
Okay, no, that's good to hear.
And, and, you know, obviously, you know, I don't want to, we don't, we don't want to get into a legal battle, but again, building your case, this is part of it. You know, we, we went through all our efforts. This is where we're at now, and look at where things are at. And then at some point, you know, God forbid if he gets in front of an arbitrator or mediator, that this all has part of that too. You know, it's, it's, it's part of the case.
Okay.
Jim, would you need to motion, or is that, is that sufficient?
If, I, I would prefer a motion on this one, and I would also prefer that you provide direction on whether you want, on the, sending the, the gentle letter, I guess, as we've termed it, but also if you would like us to start exploring the redevelopment license to see if we would qualify, that would be the other thing that I'd like direction on formally.
Would someone like to?
One or two motions.
It could be one.
Am I going to ad lib it?
Do it.
Ad lib it.
I can, if you want.
Well, Your Honor, I move the city commission send a gentle letter to, to the city, to...
Do you want me, because I would want to limit it to fact finding.
Okay.
I think it would be important to limit it, because gentle's pretty squishy. So, like, just firm it up, say, you know, so Your Honor, I move the city commission, I guess, give the direction to city staff to send a gentle fact finding letter on this matter, and also explore the redevelopment licenses.
Do you have a sec? Support. Any further discussion? Now let's take a vote.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Thank you.
Sure, no, I just wanted to make sure this, like, so we're not...
Mr. Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you guys.
Yeah, thanks for...
And with, with all due respect, the fact that you guys are commenting on the fact that you're being mindful of using your, your, your constituency's tax dollars in the right way, being a retired firefighter and medic and one of your retired firefighter medics, it means the world to me. So I, I think that's wonderful that you guys feel that way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service, Pat.
Thank you.
Yeah, really quickly, if I had a quick, can we ask a question on that topic?
Oh, which, which, which topic?
We're going to have, we'll have other business in there.
I think we've, we've passed it. I'm sorry.
We'll have other business at the end.
But, yeah, bring it up, another business, yeah. All right, drive-through moratorium.
Yes.
This is an August meeting.
This is an August meeting. So this is something that actually the, the mayor and I had a discussion about one day and thought we'd forward to the city commission to get your input on. Given the fact that I think the focus on Skymint has really sharpened our, our focus on Woodward and the potential for redevelopment to impact traffic, to impact the city, and the fact that, you know, a lot of us defaulted to thinking about Skymint in terms of, like, the Starbucks that's at 13 Mile, it has the drive-through that backs up onto Woodward all the time. Really, the, the, the greatest potential problem we could have is if a drive-through facility comes in and requests a location in the city, because that is something that doesn't put 120 people a day through the site. It puts 60 people an hour or more through the site. So City Attorney Need prepared a moratorium for six months on approving any drive-through facility. Our ordinance is currently silent on the issue, which is a problem because we're not clear. It doesn't mean it's prohibited. So if somebody comes in, we don't even have standards to review it against. So the moratorium would prevent us from considering or granting any approvals for a drive-through for six months so that the planning commission could study the issue and then possibly send an ordinance that would prohibit them to us. Because we know, we've got a lot of interesting things going on with our stretch of Woodward between the ditch and everything else, and it's, it's hard to see one of those fitting in well here.
Right. And the notion came to me because we have actually a number of empty buildings right now along Woodward, and they could become anything. And rather than become something that becomes an issue for us, as, and as we talked about Skymint, all of us pointed out Starbucks on Woodward. It's just at certain times of the day a nightmare, and we don't want that in Pleasant Ridge. We might become, I, I looked through Bloomfield Hills, but I think we might be the only city with a long Woodward that wouldn't have a drive-through or doesn't have a drive-through.
Well, we do, Comerica.
Oh, that's right, we have Comerica.
It's just a very low impact.
Very low impact one.
Mr. Mayor, also the oil change.
And the oil change, wow.
A drive-through based on this definition.
Slow drive. Yes. So we, we just want to control that so that it's not an issue in the future.
Yeah, we're fortunate that the drive-throughs we have are pretty low impact, but...
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for reminding me about Comerica, I keep forgetting.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, sorry.
Cool. Well, with that in mind, may I have a motion?
Well, I had questions, or...
After the motion.
Okay, Your Honor, I move the city commission establish a moratorium on requests for approval for drive-through facilities for a period of six months to consider any possible zoning ordinance amendments.
Is there a second?
Support.
Discussion.
Yeah, I'm generally supportive of it. Just the way that it's presented, it, it does kind of put out, and they'd be grandfathered, but existing businesses. My question would be like if these businesses relocated or did something, like, would they be subject to this ordinance, or would they be able to operate, or maybe another oil change or something wanted to open up?
I mean, any new operation would be covered by the moratorium.
Yeah, and I guess in that case, like, I'd, I'd want to see that drive-through exist, right? Like, so the, the way that their business is set up, like, that's how the oil change operates. Like, they wouldn't be able to exist if not as a drive-through.
They're grandfathered, they can continue to operate.
They are, but are there other businesses that kind of fit that? So maybe, I guess where I'm going with this is could we somehow regulate it or modulate it based on the volume, or maybe limit it to just food or something like this? Services are, like, services are the fastest growing segment of the economy. We can't imagine all, like, like, there might be services delivered in a car that might not, I don't know, affect people so much.
I think that's the reason to put a halt on everything for six months, is to do exactly that kind of investigation and determine, you know, what are the problem, how they all, should they all be prohibited? Should some be allowed? This gives you a six-month cooling off period, so nobody could come in and try to get something approved because you have no regulation.
And my understanding is that the six months is going to be for the DDA to spend the time to kind of create the rules to...
Long-term solution.
Yeah, the long-term solution so that we have more control.
And their outcome could be, we want drive-throughs. So this literally sets up the opportunity for them to review it, come back to us and, and make a recommendation.
Gives you time, the ordinance amendment is determined by this commission to be advisable, and it gives you that period of time to study it and then for you to act on it.
Right. That was the thinking.
And just one further point on that, the existing, no matter what happens, the existing drive-throughs are, would be, at that point, yeah, grandfathered in. And Greg, would those be, if, if the oil change just changed ownership or changed to a different operator, that's not really a change of use. So the business could be sold and a new oil change could go in and continue. Same thing with the bank.
But what if they wanted a shinier one on the other side of Cambridge and Woodward, other, like, on the other side of Sunny's, or, I'm just making this up, but, you know.
The likelihood is that this would not happen in the next six months.
Right.
It couldn't happen in six months. Yeah. I think that's the logic.
Part of the, part of the issue to consider there well, as well, is, is drive-throughs have one of the biggest impacts on multimodal streetscapes, because instead of having no driveways, now you have usually two driveways. And driveways add extra conflict points for bike lanes and for pedestrians. All you have to do is walk Woodward, and, you know, where you have those drive-throughs, it's a, it's, you know, is it as comfortable of a pedestrian experience walking through the drive-throughs versus walking in front of a business where there's no driveways? So one of the things I would want all of us to keep in mind is if we're, you know, looking at expanding the number of drive-throughs in the community while we're adding bike lanes along Woodward and doing those things to be a more human, walkable scale, drive-throughs are the opposite of that. It's adding more of a car scale to, to the streetscape.
For 100 and something years, we've existed as a, like, I don't think it's advocating for more drive-throughs. I think that it's just, like, taking away property rights from, from owners, but that's okay.
I think my feeling is that we take six months to flesh out the whole conversation and, you know, have then these conversations in more depth of, of, yeah, of what works, what doesn't. But the six months just gives us breathing room to do that.
Great.
Is how I'm seeing it, if I'm correct.
I'm comfortable.
All right, let's have a vote.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes. The motion carries. Thank you. All right, the city managers' report.
Um, I already mentioned the fact that bids came back for the other Woodward project. That was, you know, after our result, that was an unknown how that was going to look, but without all the green infrastructure work, those came back much closer to estimates, so that was good. That was all I really had. I'm happy to answer any other questions on whatever else is going on around town that you're curious about, but fortunately, consumers has largely packed up and moved on, and we're picking up the remaining pieces from that, but does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, yes, please. Two quick things. The wall at the end of Ridge, what happened there? Lots of people have been asking.
A car hit it, and I'll give everyone one guess as what kind of car it was.
SUV.
Big truck.
Pickup truck.
Dodge Charger. The answer is always Dodge Charger. Yeah, we have the video of it from the, from the community center.
Oh, really?
They just came driving, went right up over the curb and hit the wall.
Wow. From Ridge?
From Ridge, going north. And then they walked around the community center for a while, and it was bizarre. So, we couldn't get a license plate. No. The MDOT is aware, MDOT's getting quotes for repairing of the wall. Life in the city.
Thank you. And we don't own the wall, and we don't want to.
Correct.
And one more quick, just come up with a couple of neighbors. I know we've talked about it offline, but just to say it out loud, but, so, and you can't prove a negative, right? So in the ordinance, there's nothing saying we can't have yard fires, right?
That's correct. It's, it's not a prohibition we have. There's fire code regulations you're supposed to follow, and then we have nuisance provisions. So you are free to have campfires, but if you're smoking out your neighbors with, you know, wet wood or other things, then that is a enumerated nuisance that's in the ordinance. So, you know, call the cops if your neighbors are smoking you out, and they'll, they'll shut down the campfire. But as long as you're following the fire code and having a well-behaved fire, it's allowed.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Regarding consumers, I just want to kind of announce that there are still a few porta-potties, which, left in the city, which the runners are happy about, but with the hot weather, they don't smell great. So I, I, one of my neighbors reached out, I also reached out, and those are anticipated to be removed. They were, they said mid-month, so like the 15th of August. So they are going. so like the 15th of August. So, they are going. That's great. Yeah.
Cool.
I've been listing it as a third bath at my house.
Girls, up there.
Up there.
All right. Thanks, Jim. Anything for other business? I have one, but, oh, yes, sir.
I had one quick question.
Please come on up.
Come up or?
Yes, please.
So.
Name an address.
I'm, uh, I live in Huntington Woods.
Okay.
So.
What is your address?
It's, uh, 12883 Sherwood Drive.
So many numbers.
And 25595 Dundee. I just bought a house for moving in next month.
Oh, nice.
You're across from my sis, you're across from my sister, I think.
Yeah, it's actually, it's in, it's in Huntington Woods. It's a Royal Oak address. Strange. And right by the zoo.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is the correct forum. It's my first time really being in these types of meetings, but I, and I'm not a lawyer, but I have been working with Kelly and Dario trying to do this relaunch and getting into this liquor license, which is a mess. But my only thing is I'm going to go back to the operating, and it's more of a question for the, the legal team, and I don't know, but me reading it through it, it's pretty explicitly saying, you cannot put this into escrow without the city approval, or I don't have the exact document in front, like, it's, anybody could read this and be like, they're not allowed to do it. So when we talk about potential legal ramifications, the city getting sued, which I understand we're a litigious community, society, it's a possibility, but given how cut and dry that this operating agreement seems to be written, what are the actual realistic potential for us to be, for the city to be sued? Because it seems like we're being extremely cautious and we have a homeowner, we have an investment team that's working to try to get this launched for the community. How can we, and I understand the other avenue we're talking about, that, that's my question. Are we going way overboard on this? Because it seems.
Yeah, I mean, I think Jim kind of summarized it fairly well.
Okay.
Mayor?
Okay, please. Oh, I think we have the same one, but go for it.
Okay, well, I, I've, I was texted by former Commissioner Wall, and she threatened me that I can't. So I just wanted to remind everybody, now that everyone's gone, uh, to announce the Fall Harvest event, which is put on by the foundation. Foundation always does a heck of a job, um, raising money for all the awesome things we have in the city, and they contribute to many, many of the wonderful things we have. So, September 23rd, 6:00 PM, um, there are tickets available. There's a 50/50 raffle. Um, there are special VIP tickets if you want to ramp it up a little bit. Um, that includes special wine and other goodies. And, um, I do have, let's see, there will be a DJ, Mike Ross. Um, there will be some, a jazz piano, a wall of wine, Komodo kitchen food, so great wine and beer. So, tickets are 50 bucks each, and then the VIP tickets are 75 each, and there's a few left, so.
I got mine today, the VIP ticket.
Mine today, the VIP ticket.
Uh, I recommend everybody go to, uh, pleasantridgefoundation.org to get your tickets. Um, go to the lower right-hand corner, you'll see where to buy the ticket. Um, should be a great event. And remember, just, in fact, just mark it on your calendar, even if you're not sure you're going because things are so busy right now. Put the date in your calendar so that when the five other things show up on that day, that's at the top of the list, and that's the thing you go to.
Are you guys printing a auction booklet again?
So.
Or a brochure?
I'm not sure.
That they do that every year. I donate a paper for.
Sure.
I'm just, I'm in for it again, so.
Yeah, this is not, this is not.
It's not a city thing?
It's, well, it's not the auction, as I can see.
Right, right.
This is a different supplemental event.
Right.
So I think maybe look at the spring for the auction.
Oh, right.
And that kind of normal business.
Are they having silent auctions?
Right. You may want to get with Amanda. They, they may be doing advertising and this type of stuff, like, sep, yeah, separately.
Yeah, that's what it's, but.
Yeah.
Brochure with the auction.
I thought I heard a silent auction.
Yeah, I remember that.
No, I think you're right.
Cool.
Yeah, I would, uh, as Commissioner Lanko says, just reach out to Amanda, she'll tell you.
It's hard to get right now.
Yeah.
I used to do that.